Welcome to the City Council meeting. Today's date is April 22, 2019. The time is 5:30. We're at the City Council chambers at Towne West State Street. We give notice to the public that the Mayor and Council welcome comments from the public during the discussion of any agenda items, requiring you to step to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and limit the time to approximately three minutes so that others may be given the opportunity to speak. Do please speak clearly and direct your comments to the Mayor and City Council and not to any specific Consular. It's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would you, those who are able, rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Very good. Full house. Next thing on the agenda is item E, so if anybody up here would like to speak, it's time for the Mayor, Council, and Administrator comments. Seeing no one step forward, I would like to compliment Terry Hart. I got to see her in action out at the Roundhouse for the Special Olympics out there. It was an amazing job that she did. She's just one of our many good city staff people here with the Park and Rec Department.
Jenny Hart.
What did I say?
Terry.
Oh, I said Terry Hart, I'm sorry. I confused her with Terry Gray. Jenny Hart. Jenny Hart, for the record, sorry. And she really was marvelous out there. Do we have the years of service presentation tonight?
No.
Doesn't look like it. Okay. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Before I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, I would like to note that we're going to remove item number eight.
With that change, Your Honor, I move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. We're also going to, let's see, I believe we're going to skip over item G. Or should we? Oh, that is what we do, don't we? Yeah. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda. In about three and a half years, I will get this stuff.
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the minutes for April 8th, April 10th, and the bill is in the amount of $854,929.63. Approve the March 2019 financial statements. Approve alcohol license renewals, Baroody's Villa Chihuato, Center Street Station, Tannen, Best Western, Marshalltown, JB Bar, Walgreens, Hy-Vee Gas, Marshall Beer Wine and Spirits, Hy-Vee Party Room. Resolution declaring certain property, surplus property, and authorizing sale and disposal thereof, Hoist Universal and Champion Cable crossover machines. Resolution replacing damaged light pole on North Third Avenue between Marion Street and Swayze Street, east side of the road, with 35-foot wood pole with an 80-watt LED light. Resolution approving contract change order for the water pollution control plant biogas engine replacement project with Woodruff Construction, a decrease of $269,541.20. Resolution approving a contract for services between People Rides and the City of Marshalltown. Resolution approving closing of U.S. Bank checking account. And that would complete the consent and agenda items.
Thank you. And now on to item G. It's my understanding that that motion is not ripe to be considered?
That is correct, Your Honor.
Let's go on to item H on reports, then.
We have Jenny Etter with the Central Business District with her quarterly update.
Jenny Etter, 16 East Main. Good evening. This is an exciting time to be in the downtown, let me tell you. I have included in your packet an overview of our goals and objectives from our strategic planning that we did. I want to point out a couple things. One is that we hopefully will have a treasures tour again this year. And when we first started talking about it, people said, "How are you possibly going to have enough places to tour this year?" Well, one of the things that we thought about doing is having a potential tour and having renderings of what the buildings could look like in the future, so, and have them on an easel outside of the building so people could see what is potentially going to be the renovation projects that are in the downtown. And that could be exciting for everyone to see how beautiful the buildings might look in the future. And so, we're working to establish that and then to have some of the upper-story lofts and apartments be part of that tour as well. So, I think that will be exciting, and it will also let the community see all the hard work that the, that the building owners are going to, to renovate these buildings. I also wanted to tell you about the facade grants. And as of this month, we have roughly $63,000 left in that. We have six applications pending. That committee will review those requests on Wednesday, and we will come back then the next City Council meeting to give you our recommendations for funding those projects as well. And so, you'll get those in your packets and the outcome of that, that review. I also wanted to update you on our tornado relief fund. We received $78,602.40 from all over the United States and from the community to support rehabilitation projects. And these are small projects to help people, and they are $2,000 grants that we've given to business owners in the downtown for lighting or for, for doorways or things that their insurance company didn't pay for, but they wanted to take one more step in, in beautifying their building or in sort of some of the renovation projects they have going. And to date, we've allocated over $50,000 of those dollars, so we have a remainder of $22,000 in that. We have eight applications pending for that. That committee will meet and then decide on which projects to allocate of that. So, we hope to be able to spend out all of that money by, hopefully, the first of May, and then those funds will be depleted. So, we have lots of projects going on. Martha Green, our historical architect, and myself have been meeting weekly with building owners and business owners, going over plans of what they want to do. And so, we're really encouraging all of the business owners or building owners to apply for the catalyst grant, to come and talk to us about their projects. Some of the projects that we reviewed so far and looked at are very, very exciting. So, I think that you all are going to be really amazed at some of the hard work that people are putting into renovating their buildings and the infills that are a potential. And so, in the coming months, you all will be busy looking at new plans and renovation projects. So, anything else that I can tell you today?
Any questions or comments for Jenny?
I just had a comment. This afternoon, we went down to Black Tire.
Yes.
Bike with the kids' bikes to get them ready for spring, and they needed a new helmet and, you know, stuff like that. And that is gorgeous.
Doesn't it look great?
It looks great, and it's hard to imagine the condition it was in to now.
Right.
The transformation.
And to open up both storefronts and make it into one, it really looks terrific. They're not done.
Right.
They still have some work to do, but it's, they've done a great job.
Yeah, it was exciting.
Same thing at Ocean City last night. I learned they're putting in a sushi bar so you can sit there and watch the sushi be prepared. And they used their time off to expand their menu by about three times. Subsidy looks great, too, with that remodel. So, the people have been able to withstand it and, and get back to downtown have just been doing a bang-up job with it. And you know Jenny, I've told you several times, the tour of treasures is one of the most fascinating things I've done since we moved here in 1986. There are so many neat buildings upstairs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
The new projects will, will be so fun for people to see.
When will the McGregor project be done? And he took, they took the third story off of the last building, I know. So, are they getting to the point where they can open the street back up?
Well, not yet. They're going to put new windows in, so they'll have to have lift trucks for that. They're going to repair a lot of the facade, and so, that will be up for quite a while yet to make sure it's safe when they're putting those windows in and out. They're hurrying, though. They want it done. They want back in their building.
And true value is progressing pretty well now, too.
Yes.
Well, thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
Next up is our annual fire report. Chief?
Dave Ryerson, Marshawn Fire Department. So, it's that time again, we get to talk about annual report and what the fire department did for 2018. So, what I'd like you to do is I'd like you to go to start, we'll start with page two. And page two, just kind of a brief overview of how the whole year went for us. And we had some positives and we had some negatives. We did have an increase in calls again this year, about just a little under 7% from the previous year. The tornado impacted us, not so much from a number of calls, but from an inspection, inspection standpoint. We had buildings that were destroyed or severely damaged, so we couldn't inspect them or didn't need to inspect them. So, we saw some decrease in the increase in, excuse me, a decrease in the inspections. Another thing I'd like to point out to you on this page is, in 2018, ISO also came back. And ISO is an insurance services organization, and they're a private company that comes in and rates fire departments based on water supply, dispatch capabilities, equipment, personnel, and those types of things. And what ISO does is they provide a numerical rating to fire departments, and insurance companies use this numerical rating to help establish insurance rates for commercial and residential properties. So, we did not have a change in our ISO rating. 2010, we had one, and it was a three rating on a scale of 10. And then in also, so in 2018, that ISO rating stayed the same at a three. But what I would like to point out is, while it was still a three, we were just, we were just four points away from being rated a number two. And why that's important to us as a city is because that could potentially lead to a decrease in property insurance rates. And where we fell down in that is fire codes, fire inspections, and fire education programs is where we lost the most points in all of that. So, when you reappointed the fire marshal's position in January, that was a good thing for us. We'll be back to the council in July to update our fire codes. That will help with our ISO rating. Once we get those things in place, I can ask ISO to come back and reevaluate us, and then perhaps by the end of the year, maybe we can see that increase or that decrease in number rating and some savings to the, to the taxpayers on their insurance. Okay, so the next thing I'd like to do is skip to, skip to reports and statistics. And this will actually show you the breakdown of the calls that we ran in 2018. Like I said, we were a little under 7% increase, so 2,749 requests for service. And this little pie chart will show you where they broke down. I also included a list of what types of calls fall into those areas so that you would have an idea of what we were doing. If you flip to the very next page, one of the things that our new recording, reporting software does for us is it provides what they call a heat map. So, I can provide you a general map of where we're running calls in the city. And as you can see, we still run more of our calls north of Lynn Creek than we, than we do south, but that number south keeps growing every, every year. So, the location of the new fire station for us is, is a big thing because basically we took a minute off of the response time north and added it to the south. So, I think overall, that's going to be a very, very good location for us. If you flip to the very next page, it talks about the fires and the types of fires that we had. And total, total structure fires for us last year was, or excuse me, total fires for us was 83, which was down significantly from the year before. And that, and there's several things that led to it. You know, we had a burn ban in place, you know, for a little, about a month and a half, and we just didn't see the structure fires that we did the previous year. The other thing I'd like to point out is when you look at fire loss, last year was the first year that we didn't have a major industrial fire where we had a high, a high loss of property. So, we had about a, almost 30% decrease in property loss due to fire, which is, which is outstanding. So, while we still had fire loss at about 231,000, the assessed value of all that property was almost 400,000. So, the fire department saved about $167,000 in property loss. Another thing that we look at from an operation standpoint has to do with our response times. And if you look at that for emergency incidences last year, our emergency incidents, the response time was about five minutes and 17 seconds. So, very, very good. For non-emergency calls, just a little under seven minutes. You'll notice there's also one in there for upgraded calls. Sometimes we get dispatched, non-emergency, the call changes, and then we get upgraded, and that's, that's about five minutes, just about five minutes and 50 seconds response time. Another thing that we really look at, and this is probably where we help our response time the most, is turnout time. And turnout time is from the time we get, we get paged by 911 till the time the apparatus is rolling out the door. So, last year, our average for all emergency call was a minute and 45 seconds, and I think we can do better.
Very good.
On the very next page, and this is, this is a topic that I've talked about every year since I've been here, and that's overlapping calls. And overlapping calls are when we have more than one apparatus out on a call at the same time. And why that's important is if a call, if another call comes in during that timeframe, we don't have anybody to send to that call. We changed reporting software in 2018, and I believe that that has shined some light on the previous reporting software we're using, which was free from the state, as to what our, what our true overlapping call situation is. When I went back and looked at the old software, they looked at a specific timeframe, 10 minutes, and that's, that's where they noted their calls. In this new software, it is like whenever a vehicle is obligated, regardless of time, it looks at that. So, we had a significant increase in our overlapping calls in 2018, and I believe that that is the reason, that that is the reason why. So, basically, about 20, almost 25% of the time, we don't have a unit available to go respond on a call. And that's something that we need to, that we need to continue to look at.
Is that with, the overlapping calls is, is not one and two, it's two and three, right?
Correct. So, so, so that could be, we've got three units obligated. I mean, during the day, I've had both of my fire units out, and then I go run a call or the deputy chief goes and runs a call. So, during the day, we have a few extra bodies to assist, but in the, in the evening hours, we don't.
Okay. So, it's two to, two, two or more? Okay.
Yep, two or more.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. If we continue on to calls by day a week, you're not going to see a whole lot of change in that, and it hasn't changed much in the time that I've been here. The same thing for calls by hour of the day. We're still busiest from 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night. We've seen an increase in those from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but not much change. And I, and I doubt very seriously we will see that. We're at our most populated during those hours. If you've got kids in school, kids at the community college, people coming to town to work, that increases our population during the daytime. When it comes to training and activity, we had an increase in our training hours this year. We spent a lot of time on specialty rescues, so active shooter situations, confined space, and high-angle rescues. We spent a lot of time doing that. As far as training goes for man-hours, little, little over 12,600 hours spent actually doing Fire prevention and public education, like I said, with the tornado, the number of events that we, the number of events that we did last year were significantly down. We just had 22 PR events in 2018, and I look for that to, I look for that to increase this year. And then the other thing is Citizens Fire Academy, we had to cancel last year due to only having two people that signed up to do it. I've already had interest from six or seven, so I believe that that will occur this fall as it has in the past. Codes enforcement activity, we talked about. Activity was down about 35% from the previous year. I pulled an inspector and put him back on the line to help reduce overtime costs when I had a couple firefighters leave. So, I look for that activity to increase this year as, increase as well. And then as far as improvements and updates, so we, we changed our reporting software, and we went to mobile data terminals in our fire trucks. So, we're doing our best to leverage technology to help us better assess what we're doing as a, as a fire department. Some of it went well, some of it didn't go so well. We had some issues with the CAD vendor software talking to the software for our reporting, for our reports and for our MDTs. The CAD vendor's been less than, less than stellar in their service in this. I'm told that when the new 911 dispatch centers open, opens, that the equipment and the version of the software and everything is in there will correct all of our problems. Allegedly. And then as far as going into the future, we are so looking forward to moving into the new facility. Unfortunately, I've had a series of breakdowns at my current station, so if that building is sold, they're getting a sweet deal because it's going to have new air conditioning and a new boiler in it. So, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions you might have.
Chief, I was curious about the picture, kind of a few slides back. What event was that with that group of people?
It was just a, it's, it was the English as a Second Language Group from Iowa Valley that I went over and did a, some fire safety education with them, and they wanted to come to the fire station and see it. So, that was, that, that was one of the classes that came over and toured.
Thank you.
Hey, I thought it was pretty cool that the fire department donated a truck for the Night of Stars to raise over 80,000 bucks at the event, and that was one of those auction items that was there. Thank you.
Yep, welcome. Anything else?
Truck, not a truck. They didn't talk about trucks.
Yeah, well, a ride in the truck or a picture in the truck.
No, not even a ride in the truck. Remember, that was a, that was a birthday party at the new fire station.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Okay.
I can't keep track of this stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks. Keep up the good work, Chief. Okay. I think now we're on to resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you read the first one, please?
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award and approval of contract for the chipping of tornado-related tree debris in the amount of $59,980. And that would be with Thorpe Sawmill.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Any second? Good enough. Discussion?
Let's the second one.
Good evening. Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. As the city clerk just read, this is for the, accepting a bid and authorizing contract with Thorpe Logging and Sawmill for the chipping of the tree debris now located at the compost facility. These are the trees and root balls that came out of the terrace area between the curb and the sidewalk as a project that was, that were removed in the first quarter of this year. The low bid was about 59, just less than 60,000, and my engineer's estimate was closer to 300,000. But I'll freely admit that I'm not excellent as an engineer in estimating what it would cost to chip this, these trees. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Any idea when the other root balls work is going to be bid on and done?
So, there aren't any further contracts to remove root balls. I believe there's some touch-up and cleanup work.
Yeah, so if, are you referring to the stumps in the right-of-way? So, that is not covered by any federal funding? That has to be local funding only. I believe we're, we need to get together and figure out what we have in the road use tax budget for the right-of-way maintenance, starting after July 1st, but that is likely when you'll see most of that being put out to bid is after July 1st.
We did increase that line item, and we will have to continue probably to increase that line, line item year after year in our budget.
Let's vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. I forgot to ask for public comments, sorry. Would you read the second resolution, please, Madam Clerk?
Resolution approving an agreement with RDG Planning and Design for the Development of a Placemaking Plan for the Iowa River Trail.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any staff discussion on this one?
Yes, I will start with this, and then I think there might be others who would want to add comment. This is taking us back to about a year ago. It was in May that we were awarded a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts of $25,000 for a placemaking plan for the Iowa River Trail. And what we're talking about here is, you know, this is a trail that's 34 miles extending through seven communities. How do we make sure that we have a plan for improvements and public art and signage and other things that really sort of look cohesive and really provide sort of that, that sense of place to the trail, that you know where you're at regardless of which community you're in? So, this, this was put on hold. We didn't get our contract with the National Endowment for the Arts until August 1st, which was a very different time for all of us. And so, this was really put on hold until here in March where we were able to get the request for proposal out. We did receive six responses in total and decided to interview three different firms, and RDG was, who rose to the top after the interviews. RDG is best known for the High Trestle Trail Bridge. That's, they're, they're a very known quantity here in Iowa, and then they've just recently completed the trailhead in Waki for the Raccoon River Valley Trail. So, they bring with them a great deal of experience as well as passion for trails and for the type of plan that we're talking about. The, the cost of the contract will be a not-to-exceed $100,000 contract, which is actually what our total budget is. To remind you of kind of, you know, I mentioned the $25,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts. The Martha Ellen Ty Foundation also came in with a $50,000 grant. $5,000 was pledged from the City of Marshalltown using local option sales tax dollars, and then the remaining $20,000 was coming from a combination of the Iowa River Trail account with the Iowa National Heritage Foundation, Hardin County Trails, and Trails, Inc. And this really was a collaborative effort with our partners in Hardin County. The, the evaluation team was made up of three members from the Hardin County Trails Commission as well as three members from Trails, Inc., myself, Michelle, and then Amber Danielson with the Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance, and Heidi Delaw with the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation. So, we are ready to move forward if you are ready to move forward at this point.
Very good. Any Consular comments or questions?
I have a question, I guess. We're, the city's given 5,000, and I'm still disappointed that the county is not doing something for this trail. You talk about Hardin County, and Marshall County is, is doing nothing, and they said at one point that they would do in-kind work or something like that, but not give money. And we're using our engineering guys, so why can't the county take up some of that work and help us out that way? Then I would feel better about this $5,000. I, I'm disappointed in the county, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Other comments or questions? Public comment. Let's vote.
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. That one carried. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution number three.
Resolution supporting the Iowa Great Places designation application for the city.
Is there a motion to approve it?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deja vu all over again because we already got Deja vu all over again, because we already got this once, right?
Correct, yes. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As Mayor just mentioned, we are currently an Iowa Great Places community. In 2014, we were, received that designation along with a grant award which helped fund the projects that we know on 13th Street is Echo, the sculpture there, and Drills at the Roundhouse. So back at that time, funding and designation kind of often ran as, as one item. Since that point, the State Department of Cultural Affairs has separated the designation from the funding specific, and so every five years, we have the ability to reapply for the designation to continue as an Iowa Great Places community, and so that's what we are looking at right now. So this application that we're submitting is not associated with any specific funding, but what it does do is if we receive a designation, it does allow us to apply for funding for projects in the future during that term. So it's a very important piece of allowing additional projects down the road to come to Marshalltown as, as we have things that develop. So the designation also brings us a lot of attraction from a tourist perspective and marketing and development and all those things. So it's been a real good asset, I think, for us to have that in our cap as one of the things that we do. And the, as I said, the prior award was 350,000 that came for those two different art pieces that we saw. So the biggest difference that we have right now is in 2014, when that was applied for, it was under the Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance. Amber, Amber's there. And they were also the applicant for funding. We are proposing that this time the city be the lead in that application. One of the things that the state does look at is the funding requests also come from the same applicant that is the designated lead applicant. So if we're going to be applying for funding for projects in the future, many of the things that are possible may be involving the city to some extent, or the city could serve as a fiscal agent for those projects and have a little bit more flexibility in reimbursements and, and grant administration compared to maybe other organizations in our community. We still definitely have a core, what we call kind of a core grant team that makes up of different leaders within, within the art and culture community to kind of follow through on some of our vision plan and the efforts that we're doing associated with being an Iowa Great Places community. So we'll still have a lot of partnership. It's certainly not a sole thing that the city is doing standalone. It does, it does require that partnership, and that's critical to its success. So I know that we do have Amber and Heidi are both here as kind of team partners with that effort, and I just, we would ask for approval. The application is due May 1st for this redesignation.
But some people don't know that we've got three awards. This is one of them that shows up on the banners every third one as you're driving over the main Center Street viaduct.
Right, yeah, and you'll also notice we have signs at our gateways as well indicating our Iowa Great Place community.
Any questions or comments up here? Any out there?
Your Honor, all I was going to mention was that I think that partnership that you talked about absolutely makes for a very strong application and probably is one of the greatest strengths of our applications.
Absolutely.
For grants. So I appreciate that and all the work that's gone into it. I also am wondering, from your perspective, putting this grant together, what are some of the strengths you see in the application?
So what the designation application is, really revolves around is our visioning process that we've done as a community, and, and we're really looking back to our Imagine campaign that happened a few years back, because it came up with so many ideas. I mean, there, there's still an endless list, right, that we're working through, but we've made wonderful progress associated with that when you start looking at different areas, whether it be downtown development, trails development, 13th Street District. Those are all different areas which we have handled, different aspects of along the way from Imagine, so we really still look at that as kind of that guide for us. We've talked about it in council goal settings as well. We continue to do that. So leading with that as the kind of focus of this application and taking that vision from, you know, back at that point to what we've done, to what we plan to do in the future, is, is the core piece of this application at this point in time. As I said, future applications that revolve around funding may be more project-specific, and we would fully anticipate that, but they, they too will have to relate back to our vision.
The Arts Alliance and the impact that Marshalltown Public Art Committee did a lot of work to vet the different artists and make the selection and that sort of thing, and it really did make the Roundhouse pop and 13th Street now with the yoga in the park there. It's been a good addition to town.
Absolutely.
Any public comment?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. Carried as well. Would you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution approving a cost-sharing agreement between Casey's Marketing Company and the city regarding underground stormwater cells for storm sewer drainage.
Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. The title's a little misleading. This isn't actually for the construction of stormwater cells underground. To maybe give a little background, the store at, at 111 North Third Avenue was pretty severely damaged during the tornado, and when Casey's approached the city about discussions about rebuilding their site, they were interested in expanding to the east. As such, they purchased 303 and 1/2 and 305 Bromley Street so that when the store reopens again, I believe next month, it'll have pavement all the way around the building and driving all the way around the building. This increased impervious surface triggered the need for detention per our stormwater ordinance. In conversations with Casey's, they saw, they were seeking an alternative to having to install undergrounds detention underneath their parking lot. It would have been fairly costly. That led us to a discussion about improvements to the stormwater system in the vicinity of the store. There is a stormwater system on North Third Avenue to the north of Bromley Street, so north of the store. We looked into what the cost would be to extend the stormwater system to the nearest intake on Bromley Street near the Casey's new parking lot to the east of the building. We estimated that cost at about $104,000, and in discussions offered Casey's the ability to pay 25% of that cost in lieu of installing detention. As such, we have this agreement before you for Casey's to pay 25% of the cost. Now, the city will essentially hold it in escrow until we do the North Third Avenue, Highway 14 project, and at which time we would look to install the stormwater to assist in the drainage from their new parking. Can I answer any questions?
Justin, do you see any difficulties? And I don't know what the timeframe would be for the Highway 14 for that. You said hold it in escrow until that is ready to be constructed. Do you have a timeframe for that, and do you envision any issues? If we, in, in the meantime, will there be wet basements or throughout the area because of increased, the increased cement ratio?
I can always live to eat my words, but no, I do not envision any wet basements. There's always going to be a storm that, that causes flooding. Our ordinance is written so that we're trying to make up for every extra drop that comes from adding impervious surface. Sometimes it's a little tedious, and so I've had this discussion with multiple single property owners, commercial property owners, on why do I need to do this? Well, the answer is because every single drop adds up over the course of time, so we have to enforce the rule as it's written. But I do not foresee any problems, but once again, could, could easily live to eat my words.
So a typical thunderstorm?
Yes, exactly.
Is not going to cause any issues until this is completed? Would that be a safe thing to say?
I'll say that I hope not, and I'm not sure I can make a promise that it won't.
Okay.
Other questions or comments up here? Any out in the public?
Third, Third Avenue's this year, though, right?
No, it is not. North Third Avenue, we, we held off on to do our study of traffic impacts, whether we switch from four lanes to three lanes. I don't have an exact date in our discussions with the DOT. I get the impression that it would be 2021 or 2022 before that construction would commence. So that's, that was the reason for writing this agreement the way it was and basically holding their funds in escrow until that construction goes forth.
Okay, thank you.
I do like their facade. I wish the Casey's on Lincoln Way had done the same newer facade that they're putting in. It's going to be a very nice addition to that neighborhood. Any other comments, questions? Let's call roll on this one.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried again. Let's read the last, no, I guess next item five is a public hearing. Would you read what that resolution is, please?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a public hearing regarding financial assistance application for the 2020 consolidated transit funding, and following the public hearing, the council will consider resolution for the same.
Let's see if I can get this right this time. I now declare the public hearing to be open at 6:11 PM. Have, has the clerk received any written comments?
I have not received any written comments.
Are there any public comments? If not, now it's time for staff review.
Thank you. Kevin Pigore is your Transit Administrator. We have two grants for this upcoming fiscal year. The first is with the Iowa DOT for approximately $220,000, $21,000. And the second grant is with Federal Transit for approximately $245,000. There's no big projects of this coming fiscal year, so both grants are for operating expenses.
Thank you. Are there any council comments? If not, I declare the public hearing closed at 6:12. I think that's set a record. Is there a motion to approve it?
I move for approval.
Is there?
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments by counselors or public? Hearing done. Let's call the roll on this one as well.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carried, very good, thank you. On to the next item J, which is ordinances. Madam Clerk, would you read the first?
Yes, Your Honor, this is the first reading regarding amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 20, Section 2161, no parking anytime by adding no parking on East Main Street between 8th Avenue and 9th Avenue.
Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
A second?
Any public comment? Let's call the roll on this one.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Now we move to item K, which is discussion, and the first item is discussion of a city-held liquor license for the Coliseum.
I do not want to give anybody the impression that the Coliseum is about to open, but we are very much underway in discussions with our architects and trying to get things finalized related to the building plans. There will be a concession stand slash catering kitchen in the Coliseum, kind of in the same location of where it is currently, but a little bit bigger, more towards the, the west side. As we were beginning to discuss what this would look like, we wanted to have a conversation about if the council would consider at that point in time when the building was nearly complete, being the holder of a liquor license for the facility. What that would mean is that no one could bring in their own alcohol, that the city would basically be the, or the entity purchasing the alcohol from a distributor, marking it up, and then reselling it for events and things. In no way would this be done in, during, in, I was going to say, let me read Jeff's specific language here, that the sale of alcohol would not happen during youth events or regularly scheduled league games, but it would be something that would be available for more of the event-type uses. We do foresee this being a facility that will be rented out for possibly weddings. It is going to have a fairly big capacity, probably concerts and other special events, which would then give the renter the ability to consider whether or not they wanted to serve alcohol. This proposal does involve the city taking on some risk. We would be, those who would be serving would be city employees. There's training that they would have to go through in order to make sure that they are, you know, aware of the rules related to underage selling and avoiding that, as well as over-serving and quite a few different things. So this is, this is one of the things where, you know, that's a, it's a check and balance. One of the other things that is a positive related to this is the potential as a way to generate additional revenue for the facility. Having a new facility with a lot of new spaces that haven't been available means that we're going to have some increased maintenance costs compared to what we previously have had, and this will be a, hopefully a way for us to offset those increased costs. As a reminder, the Coliseum is accounted for in the general fund. The general fund is continuously under pressure. We, we're looking at what options we really do have to, you know, besides just the rental of the flex spaces or the, you know, the gymnasium space, what other options do, do we potentially have to help that revenue stream? So this is just discussion only. We would like to get a feel of where, where you're at on this so that when it does come ti, or so as we continue down the road of setting out what the kitchen, catering kitchen and concession stand would look like, we have an idea of, of what we would need to include in there.
Questions or comments?
Can I ask what our liability is if we allow people to bring alcohol in? And again, whether there's underage service or whether there's service beyond an intoxication level, an accident, what kind of liability does the city have if we are not the vendor of the alcohol?
That's probably a, a hard one. I would, I would potentially defer to either attorney, but I'm just, my guess would be that anybody, if there were to be something where someone would die, regardless of whether we're holding a permit and serving, or whether we're just allowing it to be brought in, we're probably still going to be named in some sort of lawsuit. Somebody could challenge our, our rules on that, probably. I don't know what way that would likely go, or if there's been any case law towards that.
I, I don't believe there's any silver bullet that make, renders you suit-proof in this sort of situation. However, if, if the city is not providing the alcohol and has merely rented the facility to someone who has the license, that person would carry the main responsibility for intoxication and how the alcohol is handled. That doesn't mean that this, that somebody won't creatively name the city as a defendant in any kind of lawsuit, but at the current time, when, when the city rents or has rented out the Coliseum and someone has wanted to have alcohol, they are required to have a license, whether it's transferred from some other location to the Coliseum for that purpose or not.
Will this increase our liability insurance for the Coliseum by being the holder of the, of the license?
I would assume that it would. So I do believe there have been times where people, a private event, can just carry in their own without a license, and it's a completely sort of unregulated thing. We do allow, like Oktoberfest is the big one where they have, you know, had their license for that location, but I, I believe there are quite a few facilities that choose not to have any sort of licensing so you can bring in your own packaged alcohol for your own enjoyment, not to resell or anything, but to, to, to provide for an event.
And generally, those carry-ins are limited to beer and, and wine coolers only.
The last time I tried a dram shop case to a jury was up in Hardin County involved in American Legion, and beer had been available, and nobody was watching the keg, and kids were able to get it and then drive and cause an accident. The judge directed a verdict on behalf of the defendants, so the American Legion was not responsible, and even the hosts of the party were not responsible because under the law, they had not served the alcohol to the minors. It's, it's an area where I don't think it's going to increase the liability insurance cost much. We've already got a significant policy, and, and so the incremental cost of adding dram shop insurances would be minuscule, I'd guess.
Yeah, and so our total umbrella right now is, I think- Yeah, and so our total umbrella right now is, I think, $7 million. We can, we can increase that, I believe, up to 10, if not more. That would probably be something where taking on an activity like that, you might, you might want to consider that in a future insurance renewal.
Do we have examples from other communities, other cities who have a liquor license and who those are and what their evaluation is to date? Can we get that somehow?
You know, I can't give you any specific examples, but I know we had kind of talked about this. There's plenty of cities that have municipal golf courses where there's typically alcohol being served there with somebody holding a liquor license. I think there was some, a community center in a smaller community that Sherry had found, but I can't recall off the top of my head what it was, but we can certainly bring that information back.
Do we hold a liquor license for the softball?
No, that's a, that's a different entity. Yep. Okay.
If, if we were, if we were to have a permit or license, who would work the bar, I guess, is what you want to call it?
Yep. So, that would be Parks and Recreation hiring employees to do that.
Have to find some seniors that don't have anything else to do.
On a Saturday night.
The only thing I'd bring up-
Pay him with one beer an hour or something, you know.
So, the only, the only thing I bring up is we continue to talk about some stuff that we're getting out of business of, whether it be compost bags or something else. I mean, that's continual conversation. If we keep talking about that, do we want to now put ourselves into a separate business as a, I get that it can add some revenue, but we keep trying to take additional responsibility that's not ours to begin with or should have known, so I don't know that this is the greatest fit, just a food for thought.
Others?
I think I'd like more information and maybe to see what other cities. I was thinking the same thing. Mr. Martin stole my question, so I'd like to look into that a little bit more.
Okay, we can bring this back on the 13th with more information.
With all the facilities in Des Moines, the city of Des Moines surely owns a bunch of those, don't they? Don't they, like the Ball Diamond and those kind of things? Aren't those?
I'm not, I'm not sure about the, the city of Des Moines and anything there, but that's one, we'll, we'll put names with some of these different facilities.
I would think.
I know my hometown of Spencer has a municipal golf course. We could check with them too.
Waterloo's got a couple.
And I haven't invited public comment on this one, but I do now.
About the one over at State Center.
So, can I just ask a question, why we wouldn't maybe entertain something similar to the softball diamond setup?
I mean, that's certainly an option as well where you would basically get a payment, an annual payment from a vendor who would, would run that. So, that's certainly another option. That's a way that, that it can be done. I think the, you know, one of the things is, you know, can, if this is something that the council would consider doing it, how do you use it to the maximum benefit of the building and, you know, the, the care and maintenance of the building?
Other questions or comments by anyone? Okay, we'll dig up more information. That takes us to the public comment part of the agenda and again, members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. Approach the microphone, state name and address. Limit comments to three minutes unless authorized longer by the mayor. Direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public and no action can be taken on items raised in public comments in order that we continue to comply with open meeting laws. The mic is open.
Good afternoon. Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. It's something that's been brought up on social media recently and I am going to specifically request that it be put on the agenda for council next time and it's a full disclosure and information regarding what's going on with the senior citizens and the Coliseum. In respect to different things that Mike's covered, from the TR, covered this process very thoroughly and one of the ones that I do want to point out is in October, when there was a lot of discussion and several of us have stood in front of council with our concerns and First Ward Councilor Sue Cahill, and this is a quote from the TR, "Made a motion to demolish, but emphasized warding be in her motion a location in an existing city building, possibly the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, be made available for the seniors." So, which we totally support that. The key is, again, in social media, they're talking about not having a place to go. So, that's of concern to a lot of people that we're hearing from, so again, I would like that to be placed on the agenda next time. One of the opportunities that we could look at that Chief just mentioned a little bit ago is fire station. Okay, that is a public building. We've had some enhancements to that building and perhaps that might be a good location if the Coliseum is not going to work. So, if you would, please put that on the agenda for next time and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lee. Anyone else wish to approach the microphone?
Zach Telmisch, 611 East South Street, apartment B12. So, I moved to Marshalltown three years ago. I didn't grow up here. I've never been to Marshalltown before I moved here and I came here because of my job. I'm a district executive for the Mid-Iowa Council and the Boy Scouts of America. I learned that I would cover the Kalamah area, which are three counties, Tamao, Marshall and Hardin, and I chose Marshalltown. Essentially, my job is to learn the communities I serve and apply the scouting program within each community. The past three years, I've gotten to know the movers and shakers here and I understand the counties that I serve. Over three years, I've learned a lot about Marshalltown. I've gotten involved with Rotary Club, Optimists, Oktoberfest, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Big Brothers, Big Sisters and many more. This has opened my eyes to how the city operates, but also how much this community cares about one another. This can be shown by my fundraising campaign alone. Marshall County blows other fundraising goals out of the water and we also have Story County. We double theirs. I'd like to say thank you. Throughout the year, at different events, I hear people talking about, "How can we get more young professionals involved? Why aren't there young professionals in Rotary?" And so on. One thing that has been difficult, upsetting from my own experience is finding a place to live. I know that I'm not the only young professional who has this problem. As a recent college graduate, one bill that I have is student loans and student loans have changed a lot, a lot, since a lot of you are in school. And not only that, but the cost of college has increased exponentially. I've paid back in student loans more than my mom paid in college. I'm a third of the way there. This is causing many young professionals to hole off buying houses and even looking because it's difficult to save. I read in the paper on Wednesday morning to see that there's a new $9 million low-income apartment complex going in with a workout center, community back and other, other great facilities. For a community who says they want young professionals involved, it doesn't seem like you want anyone to live here. Why does a community keep catering to low income? And now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but if we as a community truly want more young professionals, we need to understand their situation and find ways to bring them to the community. The apartment situation, when I was first looking in 2016, was not ideal because of the power plant. That led me to jump on the first apartment I found. Many of the complexes I looked at don't, I don't even qualify for because they were already considered low income and most young professionals will never qualify for those low-income housing. This limits my options greatly. So, for example, if I'm an engineer at Iowa State who just graduated, it makes more sense to live in Ames with all my friends and commute daily. We can split bills and heck, I got some people I want to hang out with. If I'm a recent college guy from Drake, why wouldn't I stay in Des Moines or Altoona? I mean, hell, my, my college roommate, he lives in Altoona and commutes here to the hospital. This is a problem and when people do that, they earn money in our county and they spend money in other counties. As a young professional who moved to Marshalltown, I've grown to love this city. Small-town Iowa is great. One thing scouts talk about is leave no trace or leave it better than you found it. So, that's why I'm here. I think Marshalltown can be a great destination for very young professionals or for many, excuse me, for many young professionals and we just need to understand what the next generation needs and wants. So, I'm here to appeal to all of you as our city leaders to make more of an effort for housing and young professionals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Zach does a great job for the Mid-Iowa Council too. Super passionate about your job. Thank you for being passionate about our city. That's great.
It is kind of fun to watch this new apartment complex going up over by the Waybird Social. The CEO of that company has been telling the new employees that they need to live here and, and they were saying it's hard to find a place, so that's why he's filling the bill to put those in and I expect them to be filled quickly and I hope that will spur other developers that we've been trying to recruit to this town to, to put in more nice market rate apartments.
Any other comment?
Linda Clark, Haber Frog. 306 South Second Avenue. I am a lifetime resident of Marshalltown. The senior citizen building that never was declared unstructurally sound, city-owned, my 13-year-old granddaughter today said she thought it's a little ridiculous to tear down a building 99 years old that survived the tornado and of course, everyone on this council knows how everyone spoke, saying the advantage that building was to all of the surrounding counties coming here to use that facility. And the mayor himself has said to me, he has my number. Yes, we are all watching and when children are 13 years old and they say, "This isn't right, Grandma. That's a historic building. She just told me that today." So, there are children that are watching what all the councilors doing. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing nobody arising, it is 6:32 PM and I declare a, oh.
Close session.
Yeah, we have to go into a closed session, that's right. Then I have to disinvite everybody from the room for a closed session.
We need a motion, a second to go into closed session.
I believe that we will go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Anything on State Street or on Second Street yet?
I've had an answer as far as what status goes. I mean, there's all things are in.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Okay, and we are in, let's see.
I was going to say, I'm not sure why it's.
Right. And we still need to read the reason for being in a closed session.